...on June 17, 2025 at 10:00 a.m. Before we begin, a few words from the old mayor. This is the eighth time I've gathered with city staff to discuss a budget. Four times presently and four times a long time ago. And I've noticed two things that are important. First, I'm glad we have some members of the public here today. Generally, we have no members of the public, so I'm glad you're here. Thank you for being here. But also, sometimes I think the council and staff do not realize how important these meetings are in that if it's not in the budget, it's not going to happen. Okay? And we sit up there and we pass orders, and we review contracts, we do all sorts of stuff. But if it's not in the budget, it's not going to happen. So what I hope we do as a council and as staff, work together to create a budget that's not only responsible and conservative and fair, but also sets out to achieve what we want this city to achieve while we're stewards of it. And it goes for staff, too. We're stewards of an organization that's been going on for a few years, 1889. And each of the councils before us, I struggle with how to wisely spend the money that's been entrusted to them. Now, the Water Fund is an enterprise fund, it's separate from the General Fund. But if it's not in the budget, it's not going to happen. And so I appreciate the work that the Finance Department does. I certainly appreciate the work City Manager and his team do. But the truth is, this is a very important, one of the more important meetings we'll have this year. And then the General Fund meeting will be equally important because this is where we actually decide what to stop. And I'm glad to work, not only with the great City Council, but with the great City staff. And with that, I will ask if anybody signed up for public comments?
No, sir.
All right. Well, I'm glad you're here.
Thank you.
And you will find over the next hour or two that I'm during the headlights happening. All right. Do we want to start then with Dalton Rice, City Manager?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I wanted to take this opportunity to kind of highlight just kind of a year or a year and two in review. So in 2025, or fiscal year 2025, so this current budget, in FY '24, we kind of faced some initial challenges. You know, we had anticipated about a million dollars' worth of deficit in just water sales. That was from the FY '23 budget going into '24. We took some corrective action within the expenses, and we were able to trim out quite a bit of the expenses and really got it down to about $100,000, give or take, of deficit within the 2024 budget, or sorry, 2025 budget. So then, at the same time, we were in stage three that entire year. And so we said, you know, based off of some of council's direction, looking at rates, looking at long-term, you know, kind of planning, what does that look like? We said, okay, let's take a look at, you know, the volumetric impact, you know, the consumption impact. And irrigation was kind of one of the big ones. So we said, you know what, let's run a scenario pulling about, I think, right at 30% off of the reliance of irrigation off of the volumetric use. And then, of course, we increased the base rate to kind of get caught up with market, and we'll show some of those trends as well. Really, come this time last year, we had identified that, again, it was about a million in deficit within the water sales alone. This year, at this time, Julie will go in, but we're actually in the black, which is a positive thing. Again, not to make money, but to be able to plan, you know, for the future. We were also able to add some more into CIP and fix asset replacement. We're going to talk pretty heavily about sustainability. And one of the things that we wanted to really define, and Ms. Julie's going to bring it up again as well, is what is the definition of sustainability? And if you go a little bit further, a couple pages in, we kind of put, what does sustainability mean for us? And really, for us, it's a strategic approach to ensuring long-term service delivery, financial resilience, and community equity. Allocating resources with a future in mind, not just current needs, so preparing for our future. Proactively maintaining and replacing infrastructure and assets to improve safety, efficiency, and control costs. Using data-driven forecasting to support reliable, predictable funding. Promoting equitability across residents and ratepayers. So we want this to apply not just for the Water Fund, but for anything that we do within the city organization. Ensuring the city's ability to plan confidently and deliver consistent and high-quality services over time. And strengthen the foundation for our city fiscally, operationally, and everything. So it is more than just a definition, but it's kind of the vision of what we want to talk about with sustainability. So when we say sustainability, this is ultimately what we have in mind. And we can, you know, we can shift this based off of council's thoughts and ideas and recommendations, but we wanted to provide a high-level overview. And again, we talked about the outcomes. We showed positive outcomes in our water modeling, and I look forward to our team presenting, again, a great outlook for the Water Fund going forward into this next fiscal year. And with that, Mayor, I'll turn it back over to you.
Thank you kindly. Any questions for Mr. Rice? I think we're going to hear the term sustainability often today in our next budget workshops. And so I'm the one that requests it. What does that mean? And I think the key sentence is allocating resources with a future in mind, not just our current needs. If we only planned for the coming 12 months, starting in October, we're not doing half our job. So I appreciate the emphasis on sustainability.
Yes, sir.
Are there any comments from council? I know I spoke a lot, and I probably spoke more than I should have done, but anybody? Okay, good.
Not yet.
Julie, I think you're up.
I guess I'm up. So first, I want to give credit to all the departments. I know some of them are here. This has been a long process that's not yet over. So we saw some work to do, but kind of decided to bring you where we landed on the Water Fund and your recommendations. So definitely want to say thanks to everybody who did help. We didn't do it by ourselves, for sure. So we'll call on some others as needed if there's specifics that we get into, or larger things that I can't answer for you if they're detailed. I also want to mention July 17. We'll come back to what's General Fund and other funds that really, we usually bring to you in July. We just wanted to do water first. We just don't have enough information really to confidently bring you General Fund's property taxes, just not yet. So that's why the shift. So with that, just want to give you a picture of who's on our budget committee this year. We changed this last year and added kind of a larger panel of people who's on the committee. And really, their role is just to review the overall process and kind of walk through this with us. We don't meet daily, but monthly at first, beginning right after the start of the year, and then a couple of times a month, starting in about February. But the interesting thing is departments actually present their budgets to this committee, in which Dalton affectionately likes to fill the hot seat. And so they really get to tell a high-level overview of what their departments are doing, metrics about that, and then any changes that they expect to come in the future or who asks. And so those things are all considered by this budget committee as we start rolling things into a package for you guys. So we'll bring all of this back to them whenever we get further into June, probably, and bring Water and General to them just to wrap up any little pieces. So basically, this is sometimes directors, sometimes assist directors, sometimes managers within the organization. But it's a little bit different with the idea each year so that everyone has a broad scope of what the budget is and not just singularly for their department. So agenda, so Dalton, of course, had City Manager comments. We'll walk through briefly the budget and timelines. I know y'all have seen that quite a bit. Council priorities, some economic trends, because that's really important as we're doing future forecasting. And then some overview, kind of high level of proposed expenses, and then revenues. And so if there's any specifics that you guys want to know that we're not presenting, if you'll let us know, we'll happy to provide that to you. And then, of course, we'll use the word sustainability quite often, and we'll talk to you about forecasts and what our kind of plan is long-term to be able to get where we need to be from a sustainability standpoint. So we will talk about the Garage Fund also today because it is impacted by water and that it shares the cost of that because they do the service on our equipment and vehicles over there. So we'll talk a little bit about that. So timeline, this is something you guys have seen over and over. I mean, not on paper really to put everything on you that's happening with the budget, but I wanted to highlight the yellow. Those are the important things that are going to impact you coming up, and that are dates for workshops, certified property tax deadline. And then, of course, we expect to have the calculation back from Tax Assessor on the 29th, which gives us about a day and a half to turn that around and get it filed. So it's going to be a tight week there as we get into July. So we'll be back with you on something you asked, or just know it's not because we're ignoring you, it's just going to be really busy couple of weeks. August will be, have a follow-up budget workshop. I thought that was pretty effective last year, where we brought back actual scenarios for property tax rates and then any changes that happened in your direction or just through natural order of things in the month of July. We'll present the budget to you on the 12th of August and then request a resolution for a proposed tax rate and bring those back to reading the standings. Just so you know, those are important days. And then revisiting council's top priorities. So these were established, if you remember, last year during our strategic planning day that we have. And so we really built these into our planning as we always do, aligning with Purple 2050, but then also directions of council, specifically for this meeting, water wastewater and drainage. And so one of the directives at that strategic planning session was really long-range planning and to look in the future. And I think that's what we've done over the past two to three years, and we continue, in my opinion, to get better at that. And so I hope that today we'll prove that in several things. We talked about sustainability. Dalton kind of challenged us to come up with some definitions, what I thought was good because what we think in our mind may not be the message that we're presenting. And so we talked about that and what that definition looks like when we say those words means to you. And to me, it really means future planning. At the end of the day, if you had to ask me one thing, it means we got a plan for five years from now, like today, and we've seen what can happen when we don't do that. So and then always, of course, keep citizens in mind. You know, that's top of mind for all of us, we're citizens, too. And so I think everyone in this room is impacted by the decisions we make, as well as the 24,000 other people in the city. So that is always top of mind, so I'm bringing things that has an increase or those or that. Don't think it's that we haven't thought about that because we certainly have. And so at the end of the day, we want the water to come up, and so we need to do what we have to do to make sure that that happens in the long way. So working toward that. A little bit about economic trends. I don't know if anybody has as much interest in this as I do, but I think it's important that, you know, that we use these things as factors when we're forecasting to kind of, anybody's guess, I think even the best economist out there, which I am certainly not, will say it's an educated guess. And so we use trends a lot to try to see what has happened, what's going to happen. And I think this is the second year we've really used this key message, and we probably will use it for two more years just watching this trend, is if you really look in '22 at what happened. And so when we have, you know, almost 10% inflation rates, '23 was a heavy budget, and we all know that because we didn't really know what we were going to expect. And so it's leveled since then. The Fed has either raised rates to mitigate those inflationary rates or reduced rates or held rates as it's starting to really trend downward. So their goal is about a 2% inflation rate. That's still, I think we all got spoiled if you look back in 2021 when we were at zero, and so you could borrow money for nothing and everything costs less, but everything's relative, right? So makes more, but everybody spends more, and so it's relative, no matter how you look at it. They want to maximize unemployment, or maximize employment, I should say, and try to get to a nationwide unemployment of 4.4, which 4.2 is about 4.4 right now. So we're getting there. It's just a matter of what's going to happen from here out. The expectation is probably one to two more cuts in '25, but when those are going to come, if they come, I don't know. But if they're going to get down to 2%, that's probably going to have to happen. So still have a lot of uncertainties. It's just the world we live in, I think. A few things I just wanted to point out that really impact the Water Fund as we've talked over the past few years. Petroleum-based, anything, so fuel is where it starts. And so if you look at CPI for motor fuel, you can see, you know, '22, obviously, that big jump, and then '24, you know, '23, '24 is starting to come down. Then if you look on the right top chart there, that's retail gas prices historically, so this is going back to 2016, just an interesting line to look. And what I was talking to Trina about earlier is if you draw a flat line across these and kind of pick up where your trend line is, it looks the same whether you're looking at inflation CPI, so it should. So the question is, when does that happen on a more permanent basis? So we're kind of watching to see what we can use that for going forward. On the second one, not, I guess, as important to the Water Fund, but I think important when you look at impact to everyday citizen. And really, I think the message to me here is when you look at wearing apparel is up, food is up, motor vehicles trending down, but that's CPI, again, not pricing. We're certainly not seeing price reductions, we're just seeing some leveling of the smaller increases. But those top two, really, food and wearing apparel, to me, that says labor costs. So as retailers are having to increase their cost of goods, you know, there's labor increases there, like we talked about, where everyone's making more, but everybody's spending more. So it's really relative. Any questions on any of that? Is that, I don't know if that is helpful to anyone but me, but just kind of want to outline the things that we use as we're trying to make future decisions.
I'm going to look at how it looks like some of these charts would give you a positive feeling about the future.
It does. And I think the question is, when does it straighten out again? You know, you've seen all these kind of hips and valleys, and we're seeing a little bit of downward. We're not seeing price reductions, but the good news is we're not seeing 20% to 40% increases like we were in the Water Fund when I talked to you in '22. I'm saying next year's going to be ugly. And it was for a little bit, but then we started seeing it trend down.
Trending down.
It is. It is. And so we're waiting for that consistency, I guess, and when does that stabilize so that we can count on that as we're projecting forward?
I always read all the sleep I have.
No. I don't know that you can, anyway.
I agree. What you're saying, I'm just reading the paper, and it looks like.
That's what it looks like. Past performance is our indication.
That's right.
I'm not inventing anything right now, so.
Yeah, there's a lot, and so, yeah, to your point, when rates are high, typically, other things are high as well. So as we saw, when we're making a lot of money in the market, we're paying a lot more money for stuff on the supply side. So again, relativity. Okay, so we'll hop into Water Fund detail then and talk to you a little bit about that. You'll probably get tired of hearing me talk today, so we're going to switch off a little bit. So overview of the fund, so we have seven departments within the Water Fund. That includes General Operations. David was nice enough to provide me with some metrics just so you could kind of understand the scope of our fund. So 260 miles of water distribution lines, 201 miles of sewer lines, 15 miles of reclaimed water lines, 27 lift stations, 11 well sites, 10 pump stations, about almost 11,000 meters now, and we calculated yesterday about 183,000 water bills are generated, utility bills are generated every year. So that just kind of gives you a scope of what the 55 employees do in this fund. It's a very narrowed-down version. And then the next slide, I mean, we won't read through all this, but I wanted to provide it to you, is just what kind of each department does so that you know what responsibilities each department holds. And so utility billing, of course, do we handle cash and receivables for the entire fund, do all the bills, and then install and maintenance all the meters in the ground? Water production, they get us really good, high-quality drinking water at the end of the day. They manage all of our well sites, ASR wells, all the distribution lines, and then, of course, anything with TCQ, and they are 24/7 operation, so as are two other departments. Water Distribution does the construction on the water side and repair to anything, so main breaks, all those kind of things. And again, they are, I'll put water and wastewater, that's not actually correct, and they're 24/7 as well. So when you see a main break, they're the ones responding to that. And then reclamation, of course, they're at the water treatment plant, a lot of TCQ regulations and other regulations out there that I can't speak to. Basically, they repair and manage that facility out there and make sure that wastewater is treated back to the quality to be released, either into the reuse pond or back into the river. Lab, they do all of our analysis for water production and water reclamation to make sure our chemistry is right. They also do some testing for private industry with a feed. Wastewater collection is basically the same thing Water Distribution does, but opposite, so they manage all of these sewer lines, so that over 200 miles, all the manholes and all those kind of things. And again, they're 24/7. And then General Operations, we talked about, those are really expenditures in this division that doesn't really land in a specific department, so it supports the entire fund. We'll talk about that a little bit. So as we get into expenses, just wanted you to kind of know, we've talked about this before, what is in each category? And I think this is helpful when you see monthly financial reports, too, that when we say personnel, supplies, maintenance, what are we actually talking about? And so in personnel, it's everything related to a person, so not just salaries, but salaries and benefits, so your taxes, your retirement, health insurance, and then travel and training is all wrapped up in that. Supplies is going to be anything tangible that we're using, but we're not going to capitalize over time, so not considering it an asset. Maintenance basically is exactly what it is. The thing sometimes that gets missed in here is there's some software maintenance agreements in there, so we may be using a software that we don't own, and so we put that in that category. Services is going to be utilities, but testing, professional services, anything that might fall into somebody doing something else for us. Capital, of course, is any new additions to the system that we're capitalizing. And then other is kind of things that don't fit in there. Transfers, I think this is really important because when you see the expenses in the Water Fund, transfers are really big. And we talked about the Water Fund being an enterprise fund or business-type fund, so it's completely supported by the revenues of that fund. And so unlike the General Fund, when we receive property tax that's allocated to debt, it comes in separately and goes into a separate fund automatically. We actually have to move that money from the water revenue side over into that debt. And really, it's just about transparency and accounting, which rather than not, another logical reason to do it. That way, it's just a lot more clear. But it does make your transfers look really big, and we'll talk through those when we get there. Any questions on any of that before we get into numbers? I know everyone loves.
Yeah, so the full-time equivalents are 7% over the 18 to 26.
On your FTE counts?
Yeah.
Yes, we put those in there. Am I there yet?
No.
I put those in there in two places, so we can talk about that. So.
Julie.
Yes. Yeah, that's what you wanted, right? Explanation on that?
Yes, because I didn't see. So my whole thing is about efficiency, you know? How we, where you're growing, we need to be more efficient. I don't know if we grew enough for work, you know, but obviously, there's salary increases on top of all that, so.
Right. So, I mean, we'll get into the salary part in a minute, but I did put this FTE count in a couple of places in the slide just so we could find out historically what the fund has done. So you can see relatively low number of employees for what we do, I guess, but we're pretty efficient. I mean, we don't really have anyone fussing about, you know, needing more help right now. Do I see that coming in the next few years? Probably with the growth that we're experiencing, and we've talked about it even on the utility side, number of meters and things like that.
Stuart, do you want to kind of talk to the operations and your personnel and stuff? Can you answer that?
Yes, so we have a very complex system here, way more complex than most of our competitors around here or other cities in the area, too. I would say our system, our water system, probably just as complex as SAW's is in San Antonio. It's a lot smaller, but we use the same processes. I mean, everything from surface water to reuse water to wastewater, it's a lot. We do a lot more than just about anybody else around. If you look at our employee numbers, and Dave, we can speak a little bit better, he actually, I should be at the table, he does a lot of this water stuff, and so I don't want to take all of this thunder. But what we're doing with the staff that we have is astronomical when you look at Fredericksburg just running on surface or on groundwater and the amount of plants that we have, we have two water plants and a sewer plant. I think we're on par, or actually under probably staff, or where we would be compared to most cities.
So we were doing the same thing in 2018 as we're doing now, but we still had the same water sources. But things haven't changed about, made more complicated than they were in 2018.
Well, in 2018, we didn't have a reused water system. And so we've grown by 500,000 gallons a day, or. Pardon? What's the income on the reused water system? You're going to say later on.
We're going to talk about that, but about 175,000.
Oh, we don't want to talk about that. That's not good.
Yeah. We're going to talk about that in a little bit, but.
But it has grown. It has grown substantially, and also the regulations have changed, and our population has changed. And so when you say we haven't changed any since 2018, I'd beg to differ. We've changed a lot.
I think it is reused. But it still seems like we ought to.
I don't, I didn't want to go back and look at those numbers, too, because I don't think we've grown that much since 2018. We did get, the garage came into the utility side, this side, but it's not, it shouldn't be in the water, the sewer portion of it. So we got about four employees added to Public Works recently. We also had engineering added to Public Works in that same time schedule. So I got to go back and look at the full-time equivalents and see if it's in, if this is just water or this is Public Works, too.
In the asterisk behind the 55, there was two personnel that were not new, like new to, they're new to the Water Fund, but they were realigned. So there's positions that were doing kind of split work between the General Fund, they're already employees, and we moved those into the, into the water. So that's why there's an asterisk on the 55. So technically, it's 53, but we moved some of the, two administrative folks from the General Fund into the Water Fund because they were doing a lot more responsibilities than these other.
Some of those years, too, the Water Fund, as you'll see in, when you look at the General Fund budget, too, the Water Fund does better in some years than others, and some, that helps a little bit is to say, hey, you know, we need some code enforcement, and that's a bad example, but that would be an example of something that you have just as much need of in the water side as you have in the General Fund side. You know, if they're really doing water work, is it better to bill that to the Water Fund than to the General Fund side? So we evaluate that every year, too, or management does, every year, are we using the employees for their, billing their service to the right division for the tasks that they're doing?
Mr. Barron, to Mr. McKinney's point, since I was left in 2022, the full-time employment has gone up 10%. We had a reuse pond in 2022, did we not? Population may have grown less than 1% a year since 2022. And so when you say, oh, we didn't have a reuse system and the city's really grown, in truth, the city's not grown a lot, and we did have a reuse system in 2022. To his point, he's looking at the information that we've been given. We're not putting you on the spot, we're just wondering, how does this relate to growth in that department? I'm not putting you on the spot. Again, we're not adversarial.
I understand. I take it, and I'm sorry that I'm coming across that way, but he asked how it changed from 19, 20, 1918 or 2018 to today, what has changed in your department that grew, that we actually built, the reuse pond in 2018. It didn't come on, we didn't start filling it until late in 2018. We did have it in 2020, the number that you can see.
2022.
Yes, we did have that. And so that, I was just explaining that. I wasn't trying to be adversarial, too. I was just.
No, I don't feel you're adversarial, I'm just saying. But Joe points out, you know, I'm at the back 18, but you did 2022, and see, it's 10% since then, and we already had reused water there. We're real efficient going from 18 to 22. We only had two employees, and then we've had five since, so.
The thing about this meeting is we don't, we five, are trying to represent 22,000 people. And if we have a question, it's based on what you're giving us.
Yes, sir. So I think part of the answer to that question, we can do more research on it exactly, is were we doing, did we not have enough people to do the right amount of work in those years from 18 to 22? Because every year, there is a request from police, from fire, from Public Works and Utilities. How, the personnel is the job. They have to put the pipe into the ground, they have to fix the main break, they have to work at the water treatment plant on a 24-hour basis. And so if you have only one extra person, or if you don't have an extra person and you have someone out on a 12-hour overnight shift, you have no backup, right? And so you don't have anyone there to fill that gap.
I don't want staff to misunderstand that we're saying you're overstaffed. We're just saying, based on these numbers, we've had a significant growth since 2022.
So there's other ways to measure efficiency, and one is the price of our water compared to other communities, what that price of water is, so we're able to deliver certain things. That's a certain amount of efficiency as well. But like you say, this is really not a labor-intensive particular department. I mean, it's not.
I didn't say that. I did not say that.
This is ahead of the labor.
Twenty-four hours a day, sir.
Well, no, but not that many.
Just enough.
So I think we also created a new division, right? Didn't waste park collections, we split them around eighteen.
But I'm like, I was here so.
And also other staff to help eliminate the on-call issues we're having for employee retention. We're losing a lot of folks, and they're on-call every other week, so we had to look away to create new different crews to help level off the workload.
So anyway, in all of, all these, all parts of the budgets, we need to be looking at. How do, how do we measure our efficiency? The only thing we do, we measure, you know, compared to what we've done, to the extent that we can, or compare to what other cities are doing, and maybe they have, or what other water departments are doing, we have to have some basis to say, yeah, you do a lot of work, I see, that's great. And, but how do we compare that? I mean, how do we know that it's good or excellent, or, and the main thing is, is that we're improving our efficiency. We ought to be able to at least show that we're more efficient in this, in every department, where we're making strides in efficiency. We have growth, we have size, it should help. It doesn't take another water plant, it doesn't take, you know, so everything as we grow should be getting more efficient, and we should be able to show that. And, and not, not just in the water, but everything, you know, legal services, every department, so. And that's, so I just like this, you know, I've mentioned this last year, and I think it's, you know, still important.
Yeah, and we'll show some of the trends, you know, one of the things that, from a staffing side, we are looking at kind of a staffing, we're doing a staffing survey and kind of a capacity survey as well. That's one thing that we have never really done. So we're starting with one department right now, we're working with developmental services, we're getting the framework and the tools to be able to go to each department and kind of look to see what's their efficiency, what's their capacity, you know, kind of looking at staffing models, because we've never really done a true staffing assessment. We've looked at compensation and benefits, but we've never actually looked at the staffing side of things. So we're looking at from both standpoints.
Anyway, the more efficient we make department, the more pay we should pay to those teams. So the real bottom line is trying to keep good employees, but we got to really, because the pay increases, we need to pay well employees, and the, and the system is working and getting more efficient, so we can, we can pay more.
And you'll see some of the benchmarks on the other cities from, you know, comparison to last year to this year, where we fall in line with that. So as we kind of go through, we'll see some of those as well.
So if we keep our, our metrics also within each division to show efficiencies and how we're responding to, every division operates differently, so we do have those metrics in place to, you got to measure what you guys are doing, right? What's being done to the field, you have to measure it, so we do have those in place.
Thank you for responding to that. Look, we, I think the water system is not only complex, but well-run. I'm proud of the water system. I advocate for the water system all the time. And at the same time, when your officers were full-time employed, numbers that have gone up ten percent since twenty twenty-two, we need to ask about it.
And the efficiency component there, I think is important to know just how robust our system is too. If we want to get efficient as possible, we could just run groundwater. I mean, if that's, if that's the desire, the council is to cut back on, on the scope of all the water sources that we're using, because it does cost us a lot.
Yeah, but we don't want to do that.
I understand, but I mean, if that's the point, I mean, if, I'm not saying that that's the desire, but if we're just looking at that matrix, we'd have a lot bigger system that we're operating to, and I think we're doing it, or we're trying to do a good job, and be efficient at the same time. And we do like that you point out that, hey, you know, y'all are continuing to grow, we know our needs are growing, it's just a difference. It's a, it's a, it's a big system. Now, we had, just on, just on that point, I don't want to keep going, but Bernie actually came up the other day, or Blenko, and he said Curville's the gold standard for water for now, and we hear that a lot. And so we, we're proud ourselves of that, so.
On the water system. Yeah, and you know, and even though it shows the ten percent from twenty-two to twenty-six, you know, one of the things that we looked at in twenty twenty-three was there's a lot of uncertainty in twenty twenty-three, and we'll talk a little bit about that. Inflation went up to, you know, nine percent, there's a lot of, you know, kind of, I think every city kind of over-anticipated stuff, you saw a mass, you know, massive increase in appraisal values, you know, every city was kind of, you know, hitting the no-due revenue rates because appraisals were going up so high. So there was a lot of flux and uncertainty during that time, you know, from the twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-three. I wasn't here during that time, but again, I think everybody was kind of planning ahead for what does the future outlook look on this? When we really looked on the stability, and you'll see some of the charts, as Julie will point them out, really from twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-six, it really grew one person. Because even though we added two new people into the water fund, you know, from the administrative side, those are not new requests, those are not new people. So it's really, it's maintained relatively flat since we've come off the twenty twenty-three bump, which you'll see in some of the charts, going into the twenty twenty-six. So just, again, just some of the things to kind of think about.
Yeah, I mean, if I can just say here, if two were transfers in, that really only puts us at from forty-eight to fifty-three, correct?
Correct.
Since twenty eighteen, which is about one person per year, or less, a little less than one person per year. And as somebody who was here thirty-three years ago, I will tell you that you used to could not drink this Curville water, and you can now, and that's efficiency. And that's what I want to point out to this group.
One thing we did look at on that, not the FTE count, but when we look at the administrative transfer from the water fund to the general fund, what we looked at when we do that big analysis is percent of people in the general fund who are actually functioning within the water fund, and a lot of those were already at sixty-five, seventy percent. So that expense has essentially been there in the transfer, and so there was some decisions made to give up a few of their duties they were in the general fund and dedicate them specifically to water. And that was an exercise that, that David and I went through recently, to really decide which people are doing what duties. And so, you know, I think efficiency is a super good word, and definitely something we look at when we're looking at and into the future. And so in a way, to me, it's just a little bit, very clear way to expense that, instead of it being within transfer, which is part of the good calculation, so.
I want to tease Brenda for a second. I've been drinking Curville water since sixty-one, so I guess I built up a tolerance.
Yeah.
All right, let's move on to the overview page.
All right, so we started talking about numbers. So right now, the water fund's balance at seventeen, seventeen point six million in revenue and expenditures, that's four point four percent higher than it was last year, seven hundred and forty thousand dollars. Remember, last year, that was almost nine percent, so we had a big increase last year as we restructured rates and those kind of things, which we'll talk about. But I want to point out that that seven hundred and forty thousand dollar increase, thirty-eight percent of that is from reuse rate increases, and so pretty big burden off of everyone else as we try to restructure some of the reuse things where we can, and we'll talk about that in more detail in a little bit. Assumptions were small rate increases to both water and sewer rates, as Dalton talked about, and again, Trina will get into the weeds on that in a little bit. No increases to tier rates of most water customers, so anything that would be an assumption that wasn't irrigation customers, do not have a tiered rate increase. Continued to reduce the density on irrigation, so she can talk about that a little bit more, but basically we gave it another ten percent haircut, just really backing off of what we have to rely on for irrigation, as we saw the impact of that last year in a big way. Super conservative operational expenses, though we talked about, you know, expenses, departments in the past two to three years have just really dove in, I guess, for lack of a better word, and said, okay, what are we budgeting, what are we spending, what are our wants versus what are our needs, and what's real. And so a lot of rightsizing has been done in the past few years, and that coupled with, you know, the economy kind of leveling out a little bit, is really making us be flat in a lot of areas, and even some decreases in some, with the exception of personnel. Continued emphasis on sustainability, so last year, remember, we transferred seven hundred and fifty thousand to asset replacement, this year I have budgeted six hundred and fifty, and I'll talk to you about why here a little bit. CIP last year was four hundred and twenty-five, we have budgeted five hundred. And the facility replacement system, we have a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar budget transfer. This was funded through interest revenue last year, so we'll talk about that as well. Other transfers, of course, those that need debt obligations, exactly flat with last year, I mean, within sixty thousand dollars, it's not a big difference, actually it's a little bit lower. Administrative charge to the general fund is right at two million, and again, we do a really detailed calculation on how to determine the services provided to the water fund from the general fund, and we maintain that throughout the year. Street use fee, which is basically the utility franchise fee, it's kind of the same that Atmost pays, and some communications companies, and those kind of things, anyone who's going to cut the streets, it's going to create repairs for us, and then develop the services for the services they provide to the water. So I'm going to look at future forecasts with you and show you just some key takeaways. I printed this because on the screen and on this PowerPoint, it's really hard to see, so I printed it so that you could see it a little bit bigger, I'm not sure that it's a whole lot better, but I'll talk to you just through the key takeaways, and we're going to talk through all of those. But really, for me, what I wanted to show, if you look at the first red box, and I have a red box around things that I thought were notable enough to talk about. Projected revenue increases year-over-year, so you'll see the four point four projected in twenty twenty-six, and then they work their way down. And so really, we spent a lot of time, Dalton and I, talking about what would we, what's our goal here, what are we trying to do? And so of course, stabilize revenue, which is what we really talked a lot about last year, but then also maybe try to get somewhere within what is normal for inflation, as far as year-over-year increases. And so we're really diving into that from a consumption standpoint. The other thing to remember is that increase in revenue is not necessarily indicative of increase in rates, because you're going to have some natural growth that's going to happen there, and other revenue sources that bring money to the pool is not necessarily from the right pair. And so we're looking at all of those factors to be able to bring you something that says, this is kind of what we think from a rate side, but I've said that before in a public meeting, and then in some crazy thing in twenty twenty-two happened, and all that went out the window. And so it's really hard to say, in our perfect world, this is what it would be, but there's a lot of, a lot of little nuances, and so that's why it's important we analyze it all the time, and so we'll bring you more information on that.
I want the council to notice that Julie said brings money to the pool of water.
We'll remember that and July seventeen, we'll see how that goes. See how that goes. So really conservative again on operational expenses, and I didn't get into a lot of detail here, but if you look at the red boxes, the big thing for me, and we're going to talk about this quite a bit in a minute, is asset replacement, the way we have it forecasted, if everything flows the way we hope it does, is sufficient enough to cover our annualized costs for asset replacement. And really, that's what we were trying to get to, and I think the last couple of years, we've really been focused on that. And what I'd like to bring you, which I will bring you in present budget presentation, but I didn't have good enough data now, is what has the age of our fleet changed in years compared to when we first started this exercise in twenty-two? So I want to bring you that here to say, this is what our average age of our fleet was before we really started saying this is important to compare to what it is now.
Can I ask a question then? When you're talking asset replacement, you're just talking about the fleet, or you're talking about pipes in the ground? What are we talking about?
So vehicles, and equipment, and mostly meters. So any big stuff that we're going to have to do, big project stuff is probably going to be on the CIP.
So no infrastructure just?
Yes, no infrastructure.
Yeah, CIP would, would cover the infrastructure cost from general.
There's a facility system replacement line.
And, yeah, so, and then, so really, when you look at the fixed asset replacement stuff, you'll have fixed asset replacement, which could be equipment, vehicles, you'll have CIP, which could be more infrastructure-related, and then you'll also have what our new kind of fund from last year is the general facilities fund, which would be actual like facility, so the buildings itself. All of those things we've really started focusing on to, to put money away. And a great example of what we're trying to overcome in the, in the essence of sustainability is us not having to pull either major tax notes or tax notes to replace HVAC systems, how do we cover that, either through cash or through minimal impact to debt service?
So capital projects line that would be sourcing new water included in that?
That, or it could be capital projects, but what you're still placing on, all your project. And we're going to talk about that a little bit, but.
All the different projects, so some of it's bond money, but do you want to just know what the projects are, like the list of them?
Well, just examples, like it's not just pipes in the ground, it's other things.
Oh, yeah, there's, anything from equipment replier, like we had the filters over at the waste water, the water treatment plant, we do lift station, pump upgrades, pipe repairs, pipes in the ground, leaky manholes, manhole cover replacements, there's, there's all kinds of stuff.
Sourcing new water is one of those things.
Replacement of the, of the lower street tank.
Is that in CIP, or is that?
That's a CIP.
Help a little counsel on this. It's a scene that actually started.
Two more years, two parts of CIP. So what, suppose you have, what part of this is, how much is new water source?
We're going to hop into CIP in pretty good detail here in a minute, like what the specific projects are, and then Stuart and Dalton can talk about that way more than I can.
Thank you.
So anyway, we increased the transfer to CIP, you'll see that, and I'll talk you through that in just a minute. But notice, the big thing here is in twenty twenty-nine, we talked about this last year, that's our big debt payoff, so that's when our KPOB loan gets paid off. And so if you look at that line that says change in net position, and it's that red box around it, that's basically telling you where we are. So in twenty-six, you can see we're zero, in twenty-seven, we're close. I've got it for the next three years, and I feel like if this model works the way I hope it does, and it's been pretty close the last few years, we're pretty close to being balanced. But look at twenty thirty, where you start seeing a surplus there, and so that's when you can see that debt falls off. And if you look at the CIP and the asset replacement transfers, you see those being much larger, so we're being able to put away more cash, because we have more cash fluid, because that's a debt issuance that's going to fall off. And so even if we were to issue more debt, it's a lot about structuring and how that looks, so that we don't, you know, have a one point eight million dollar payment on, on one issuance. And so there's some structuring that we can do just to be responsible in the event that we need to issue that in the future. But also, the last box there is your fund balance, and so Water Fund has always had a pretty healthy fund balance. We try to keep the budget balanced, and if we do that, then your fund balance should be protected. It's only when we start dipping into that that it would be hurt.
And remind me, I'm sorry, but fund balance is, is there by policy, by policy resolution, I'm sure, but also in case there's an emergency, there's something to do.
That's right. Yeah, typically, GFOA recommends fifteen to twenty-five percent. You don't want to carry too much, because then we have money sitting there that we could be using and budgetary other ways, but we want to make sure that we have, you know, three to four months of operating if something were to happen.
So I'm going to give you a couple of different ways to look at expenditures, and I don't know if you prefer pictures or words, so I'll give you a little bit of both. But this basically tells you by category how the proposed expenses are for twenty twenty-six. And so the big kind of takeaways here, personnel increase seven point three. Keep in mind, we don't know what group insurance is going to be yet, so we're estimated pretty high. I've got two thousand more dollars per employee than I did last year in that, so I don't expect that that's going to be lower than that, but we're still watching that, we won't know that until July. So that's a piece that we just, we don't know yet. Supplies, slight increase, one point one percent. It's basic stuff, nothing really outliers there. Remember that a couple of years ago, we added the GAC filtration systems at the water production plant, and so theirs are on an annual replacement basis now, so there'll be a little bit of an increase there. Maintenance has actually a decrease, and some of that, as we've looked at, is attributed to vehicles, and so as our vehicles and equipment is getting newer, we're spending less on maintenance of those vehicles, so that's been a good thing. And then really, just leveling of costs, you know, we had a higher budget in twenty-three because of unknown factors, and so that's kind of leveled over the past couple of years. An increase in services, I can tell you that that is primarily liability insurance. I mean, your utilities and things, yes, that's going to go a little bit, but it's primary on the insurance side, as I'm sure you're all experiencing at home as well. Capital and other, that decrease of seven point nine percent. We've been moving most capital, so anything over ten thousand, as far as vehicles and equipment, we've been paying for an asset replacement, so that we don't see this kind of operational budget, we see more of a smooth line operational budget, but also we reduced contingency a little bit the last few years, we just haven't needed it. So we reduced it a little bit, so we still have some contingency there for emergency, but we really ask departments not to budget what we call fluff within their operational budget, so we can really see true historical numbers, and so that's been really helpful. So we did have an eight hundred and fifty thousand dollar increase in sustainability compared to twenty twenty-five, so those were offset, you know, we only have a seven hundred and forty thousand dollar increase, there were some decreases in there that offset some of that, so. Okay, this is just a little bit different picture, if you like to see historical trend, so this is looking all the way back from twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-four actuals, twenty-five budget, and then twenty-six proposed. And so again, you can see the jump there, starting in twenty-three in personnel, which we all know what impacted that. Everything else is pretty level, I mean, twenty-three obviously higher than most other years, with the exception of personnel and then transfers, which we did have the jump in twenty-four when we issued the twenty twenty-three debt, so we had a jump there in the debt payment, and then our KPOB loan also jumped up. And so again, you'll see that, that line should go down in twenty thirty. But debt service again is flat with twenty-five, so no increase this year.
Didn't you issue water revenue bonds since twenty twenty-four?
We did, in twenty twenty-three. That was when we issued the, was it eleven and a half, twelve million, credit, you know, for the projects that we have.
I was involved, but it was a few nights ago.
It was a few nights ago, you're right, I have to look back all the time.
So this is just giving you by department, instead of by category, so that you can see which departments kind of spend the most money, and of course, they line up with the heaviest workload, of course. And then obviously, general operations is largest, but in that issue where your transfers fall, and then liability insurance and those kind of things that impacted the entire fund. Also, your garage contract, so the garage is an internal service fund, so the water fund, based on percentage of vehicles and equipment serviced by the garage, pays its
Fund, based on percentage of vehicles and equipment serviced by the garage, pays its portion of operations of the garage, so that's how the garage is funded. For no reason, we'll talk about the garage fund later today. The little black numbers below the bar graphs there, those are employees in each department. I just thought that was important for you to see them like that. So you can tell which departments have those. Any questions on proposed expenses in the operations side? We're going to talk about the fund stuff next. Questions, even? Okay. So stop me, or Dalton, stop me, if y'all have something. David, if you have something, especially on this next couple of things here.
I'll wait for that first question from Jeff today.
He'll have it. He's writing them down over there. I know he is. So Water Fund asset replacement, I know we've taught this to death, but we've spent an enormous amount of time in the past few years, really just deciding, do we have everything booked? Do we know what we have? Do we know what we own? Do we have the right stuff? Do we need to get rid of some stuff? Or what? David has probably been, and Jacob have been our kind of lead people on that, so a lot of props to them. There was a lot of work that has gone into building out these asset replacement models, both for Water Fund and General Fund. We continue to address it. It's going to be a living, ongoing process that's never going to end, and it shouldn't. But again, vehicle, equipment, some infrastructure. When I say infrastructure, I mostly mean metering, infrastructure, things that you can pick up and replace, nothing big projects happening in here. We really wanted to just achieve sustainability there, so replacing things like we should. Are we providing safe equipment and tools for our employees to use? And with that, reducing operational costs, and that's exactly what we're seeing is happening as we're paying attention to these more. Done a lot of rightsizing. Do we need this? We used to use it, but just because we have it doesn't mean that we need to replace it because we don't use it anymore, and those kind of conversations. What we're proposing in the Water Fund for 2026, and keep in mind, there are a couple of things. So a crane truck that is a 2007, that probably needed to be replaced a couple of years ago, is up for replacement. That's the biggest thing that we're proposing. Water production and utility billing, both have trucks that need to be replaced, one's a 2006. And I will say that those are the oldest things that we have in our fleet outside of tractors and equipment. So we're happy to report that our vehicles are coming around to within a 10-year window at least.
Just very briefly, why do we use a crane truck for?
Crane truck.
What does a crane truck?
Pump side of lift stations or doing well sites.
We do have current lease obligations, and that's that $46,000 there for a multitude of vehicles. That's been an effective way to manage finances as well, because it's a lease-to-home program that we worked to finalize. So that was really effective when we first started addressing these assets, because we had no need that we could afford, so we were able to get more done with the dollars. Also note, you guys approved a budget amendment for a mini excavator. Remember, as part of the budget amendment for water distribution, that was intended to be in 2026, but it got moved back to '25, so just wanted to point that out. And that's been ordered, correct? Pretty sure. Okay. So looking a little closer at asset replacement. So we make decisions for forecasting and replacement based on condition, age, mileage, hours, things like that. Our staff does do multi-condition kind of assessments. The garage does one, and then staff does one, and so we kind of combine those to decide, do we really need to replace it just because it's five years old? Maybe not. So includes vehicles, as we talked about. Larger assets are just too costly to put here. So you know, to your point about, you know, if we're going to go drill a new well, or we're going to, you know, replace an entire, you know, $200,000 pump that's going to be multifaceted and maybe over, of course, maybe a year or more, those are going to be in CIP. And so we'll bring those to you independently.
Was that last bit? I'm sorry.
If you're, you know, you're going to completely redo a well or something like that, that would be, it would just be too costly for this fund to manage. So that's going to probably be CIP, and we'll bring that back to you.
And you're the CIP person.
Yep, that's okay. Really, a lot of progress has been made, and again, our goal is just to build a balance that would sufficient to cover our annualized cost. And so we kind of took the big years out and took the small years out and say, on average, what do we need in this fund? And so that's really what we've built out for you here. There are some price escalators built in here, based on what's happening right now. Those could change. But you'll see departments by color, and those are dollars, not number of assets, so dollars needed all the way out to 2030, so you can see what that looks like. I really wanted to see the fund balance next to those expenses, but it didn't look right when I tried to put them in here. So I put it down for you at the bottom, and basically what that's showing is, at the end of '24, after expenses, we had $996,000, so that started '25. Will be about the same boat at the end of this year. You can see your transfers there. We're proposing a little bit less transfer in this year because really, the need is in CIP. And we've shown that with this transfer, we're taking care of costs. And so we don't want to leave money on the table by putting money into a fund that we're not going to spend, and we're okay, healthy-wise, five, six years out. So we want to shift that and take care of the fund that doesn't have the money. So you can see those out moving forward. In 2030, after we spend everything, we're still about $1 million. So even if we have higher price escalations than I built in, we're still pretty healthy to be able to take care of the cost that we need. David's really taken a deep dive, because all of his departments are utility departments, at individual assets and worked with us to say, we need this, we don't need this, we're never going to use that again, or hey, we should do this instead of that, to really maximize.
She's had another pun, she's had deep dive.
Just another pun. Man, I'm going to have to come up with some revenues. We're going to all be cranking.
Real quick, Julie, a couple of things also to note. Two things we're looking at on this one is, one, we're making sure that at a minimum, we have enough to cover, we'll call it an average annualized cost of sustainability or fixed assets and infrastructure as well within the fund balance or the savings. We are also going to be doing an exercise over the next, you know, really year on leveling out the transfers in. So even if we have half a million versus 1 million, and you see this roller coaster up, but we're going to be looking at what leveling does, so that way we can capitalize on the fund balance in years that we need to, and then be able to put back to the fund balance on years that we don't.
And you can see that a little bit on your forecast kind of built out?
This is beautiful, but what am I, what am I learning from it? I don't understand.
So let's break that down. So your, each little line is a department.
Correct.
And so if you look at fiscal year '24, for example.
2025 estimate and 2026 proposed?
Yes, so we're saying.
Almost as if you zeroed out water reclamation.
Say again?
Almost as if you zeroed out water reclamation.
We just didn't buy anything for them in that year? They're '26, yeah, we just don't have any expenditures for them that year.
Yellow, no yellow.
Nothing, nothing on their books to be replaced.
What I'm learning by looking at this is, we are anticipating expenses maybe in '27, '28, '29, that we're not going to have this year. And our big expenses this year appears to be wastewater collection. Is that correct?
Correct, and that's that.
That long project that's still going on between Nap Road all the way to Jefferson Street, or no?
That's a CIP.
Yeah, that'll be CIP. This is going to be.
This is an asset replacement.
Yeah, that green is the, that crane truck. Okay, that's the green.
One reclamation, that that plant doesn't have that much rolling stock. They don't have that many. They have a dump truck. These others have a lot more equipment that's a little bit heavier of a price tag.
I think on a, I think he's looking at, under the water and sewer fund, you know, general fund of water sewer and the underwater, there's two different, there's two or three different funds underwater. But you have the capital improvement portion of it, and you have operations, and you have the asset replacement.
This one's just about the asset replacement, mainly rolling stock pumps and things of that nature that you'll see here.
Rolling stock from wastewater collection.
Yeah, green is, in '26 is that crane truck.
Okay. Jeff had a question.
Yes.
So the green in '26, which you just said is the crane truck, is that reflecting $88,000 from the case excavator that we just purchased?
That is in '25. We've already had that plugged there, and that's why that says estimate instead of budget, because that's really what we expect to do this year.
Right. So is our budget going to reflect the $88,000 purchase in '25?
Yes.
For '26?
When we did the budget amendment, we made that adjustment, and so when we show you original to current budget, you will see that reflected there.
Okay, thank you.
And that, we gave you the estimate because based on what we expect to actually buy this year, that it changes our fund balance, so we're going to give you kind of a true fund balance.
Yeah, and the other thing that complicates it more sometimes, when you start looking at some of the equipment that takes a year, year and a half to acquire, we will either put a down payment or a purchase, or something will happen in that year, or we'll encumber it, and then that encumbrance. And so that was a big reason why the water asset fund, just like a CIP, was created, was to keep these roller coasters out of the, out of the maintenance and operations budgets, where we can have the roller coaster within this one. And so while you see the roller coaster, once we work on the leveling piece, then you'll see that leveling line where we say, hey, we don't need to do the roller coaster every year, we can level it out and use fund balance to help offset some of that fluctuations.
I think, I think we all need to remember our roles here. We have no desire to be in the management of this thing. We represent the shareholders, all the rate payers of this enterprise. And so when we ask questions, it's not saying, we wish y'all would have managed it this way or this way, this way. We're just trying to understand.
Yeah.
So we represent, because we represent the people who write the check to pay for their water bill or benefit from the reclaimed water. Yes, okay?
And those questions help us.
And we, and Carolyn asked me how many times I stopped at HEB yesterday, and it was only 18 times. And a lot of those questions were about water.
You're going to give mileage for your shopping cart?
And most of those people, I did not know who they were.
They knew you did.
No, you know who you are.
And that's for us, is no, we, you know, we absolutely don't take it that way. The questions really help us, and when we, when we provide some of the comments for it, those are, could be talking points for y'all. We want those to be talking points for y'all as y'all interact with folks. And so the more talking points y'all need from us, please let us know, and we can give as many talking points as y'all need.
Well, I try to stay in my lane. I do. But my lane, our lane is a bumpy road sometimes.
Let me know, I can think anything you need from HEB.
There you go.
Well, and I think, I think remember, sometimes we speak a certain language, and if that language isn't clear, we need those questions to say, I have no idea what you're talking about.
Even though this is my eighth time.
It's okay. Which is probably your eighth different chart. Probably not the same chart.
I had to show you. What am I learning from this? It's very pretty.
Each of these colors is a department. Maybe I should have put it that way. Every color is a department.
So I have a question.
So the questions help us.
In 2030, you got the big water production. So what expense is that?
That is the Xenon replacement. David, can you talk about that?
So we replaced that from last year.
Two years ago.
And so it's up for replacement.
Every five years?
Every five years.
With the Xenon, the membrane?
Looks like noodles. Yeah.
Yeah, and the big tall towers over on Thompson.
So on the fund balance?
Go ahead, please.
So we start with '24, $965,000. The $500 in took $52,000 out, more than that, and the fund balance went up.
So a couple of things. I have your interest revenue and your asset disposals step hidden. I was really just trying to reflect money in and money out. So if you were to look at this in the budget book, there's some lines in there. So you've got, you know, some asset disposal that's unknown, and we have it plugged at a baseline number, and then there's some interest revenue. What I was really just trying to show you, both beginning and ending. So I should have included those lines, but it wouldn't fit, and that would tie out if we did that. I thought about that yesterday, if that's what you're asking.
There's other incomes that's.
Yeah, a little bit.
Correct. One of the things that we do is across both the general fund and the water fund, anytime a vehicle is either auctioned or traded or sold, that goes right back into the fixed asset replacement fund, so we don't commingle those assets. Same thing with interest income, we keep it within, within those funds, and so that's where it will reflect a little bit different.
Yeah, when you see it in the actual budget book, this whole thing as a page, there's a lot of information in here. I've just tried to squeeze it down to give you the high level, this is what we're talking about, this is our transfers moving out year over year, and this is how it impacts the fund balance. And I knew that when I did it last night, I'm like, ah. That's going to be a question, but to other, some people don't want to see it like that, so.
Yeah, and the other thing I want to point out too, just high level, David and Stewart and his team have done a phenomenal job on five-year forecasting. That is something Julie and I have really been pressing, you know, across the general fund and other departments. They have done a phenomenal job at actually having a good five-year forecast, you know, with good predictions and everything. And so that's something that we're continuously working through to show efficiency, to show where we're at, and I will give them a lot of credit where credit is due. They have done their due diligence on that. That's why going 30, 2030, they can predict relatively close what that CIP is looking like.
Okay, just a little bit more on asset replacement. And again, this has just been super important in the past couple of years. We don't have to get as deep into this, but what this really shows you is budget to actual transfers, and again, just speaking to the intent. And so if you see where budget is lower than actual, what that means is, we transferred some money over there, but we waited until we had surplus to do it. And so it just wasn't intentional. And you can see, of course, the small amount. Now, with that being said, '21 and '24, things have, you know, 30 to 40% or more in cost increase, so there's that factor too. But I think just the intentionality of including this in the budget is really important and goes back to sustainability. What are we doing for five years down the road, instead of saying, hey, our crane truck broke, and now we have to go out and borrow money to buy a $400,000 crane truck because we have a plan? And so that's really what, that's really what this is about.
Yeah, what I really liked about this slide, at least from the asset side, and it's very similar to what the Water Fund would show as well, is you can tell that where we were intentional versus where we were not. You can tell where we said, you know what, we need to start actually looking forward and start being intentional with what we're doing versus us just dealing with the volatility in the current year. And you can really reflect that in the 2023, which again, we've identified and we said, you know, and we said, hey, these are the problems, these are the challenges, now how do we fix that going forward? And now you start seeing that leveling of budget versus actual cash in, cash out.
That's really important. That's really great that you're doing that.
And I think, you know, to that point, this is an area, asset replacement, CIP, any of those sustainability, where you can say, well, I need to balance the budget, so just reduce that, instead of addressing the true need going out. And so what you get into is, oh, we reduced it, well, it's zero. Well, then now what for next year and the next year and the next year? We'll go issue debt to get to pay for something that we could have saved for, maybe not in total, but at least a part. And so that was kind of the direction we took going into '23, and that's what we heard last year, and so we wanted to just continue that forward. Of course, you know, we can adjust.
A little bit of context, back in the 90s, when I was involved earlier, we had a program called Pays You Go, all right? And what that ended up being is a lot of go and no pay.
Yeah.
So it's good plan.
That's right. Okay, so enough about asset replacement. Y'all specific questions, please reach out to us. David and Jacob are so versed in that, David, we'll talk about it soon. So a little bit about CIP, and I think this comes back to a question a minute ago. If you want to talk through the '26 projects and taking care of that stuff, and then, yeah, what's coming up?
So again, the different funds, water, you got the operation assets, and this is a CIP, this is the big project. Anything that we're going to do that are usually a couple hundred thousand dollars or more is a CIP project, which includes line replacement upgrades to lift stations, wells, tanks, water treatment plant, big ticket item. So with that, we'll go through the list here real quick. The Nap Road water line, that's, that's coming down, it's going to end behind Walmart, it's just about done. You've seen that being going on for about a year and a half now. They're just now finishing up with that project. The lift station improvements, we awarded that, I think it was two council meetings ago, is around $3 million for the lift station improvement, there's three lift stations on there, Comanche Trace and Airport and Broadway. And so they'll be fixing or hiring a contractor right now to do that work. Lowest Methodist and Kim at Pressure Plane. This is the lowest tank that everybody's so interested in. So part of the holdup for that particular project is we had money left over from the... If this is too much detail for this meeting, I'll have you to just blow through them a little faster. But the Legion Lift Station project was, had money left over from the Water Development Board. And so they said they really didn't want their money back. They wanted us to use it for another project. We said, great. And we've been suffering from that ever since. Getting their approval, that was fine for us to reallocate it, but you have to go through a process to reallocate that money through their department. Then you have to get your plans reviewed, which we've already gone through, all that process. And now we've got to get them to turn loose of the money, which won't happen until November because they got to go through their process.
Not everybody maybe, just in Lois. I just try to buy it every day, home, book, home.
Well, it's frustrating to us too, because when the Water Development Board says, hey, no, we really want y'all to use that money. It's been allocated to Curville. It's for this lift station. Y'all are welcome to use it for something else. And then it's a year later before they get out of your way and let you start your project.
For context, that tank was there when I was little boy.
Very good. Well, hopefully it won't be there much longer. So we are working on that. Travis Pump Station, that's an improvement to the Travis pumps. That particular well there was a well that the city, I won't get into all that detail. It needed to be replaced. We've abandoned the well, and we're going to upgrade the pumps from 300 gallon a minute pumps to 650 gallon a minutes of pumps. And that will serve the College Cove Pressure Plane, the New Lenore subdivision. EIC is going to help us with some of those costs. Clarifier at the wastewater treatment plant, one of our clarifiers in needed rehab. It's actually taken all apart right now, so they're in the middle of that project. Other wastewater treatment plant improvements, there's three components out there that we needed funding from. This was all bond money. We had a step screen that needs to be replaced. Filter Gallery also needs to have some new filters put into it instead of the media. And then also our RAS pumps over there need to be replaced. So we have contracted freezing nickels in there in the line phase of that particular project. Water line replacement, and then that whole replacement, general water lines and manholes that we're replacing throughout the city.
Stuart, let me ask you a question on water line replacement. How many clay pipes do we still have in the city of Curville?
None that we're aware of on the water side. On the sewer side, we have quite a few of them. And actually, there's some good pipes. There's actually some really big ones that run under Shriners University. Those are, there's a 20, I think it's a 25-inch clay pipe. And the clay pipe lasts a very long time, as long as it was laid right. And so if it doesn't have any breaks in it or anything, it'll probably last longer than PVC will.
Is that the problem we had on Water Street? Wasn't that some clay that failed?
We've had a lot of problems on Water Street lately. But there was, from Maine to... Washington. That one we needed upside. That one was not clay, it was just an undersized main.
Thank you.
Main to Washington are perpendicular.
Wash, I mean, from Cindy Baker along Water Street.
Thank you.
I have a list of other projects too. So those are the already funded ones. Now, I won't go into such the detail, but just so y'all know that, hey, there's always a lot of things that we're trying to consider, that we're thinking about what the next ones are. These are going to be in your city water and wastewater master plan. You'll see two different processes in there or two different CIP lists. One is for developer-driven projects. Let's say somebody comes to town and wants to do a development. We say, we understand you're going to want to do that, and this is kind of the way the city expects it to be done. And then we have city-driven projects that are for replacement of old components and things that we need to upsize. Within our system, that's not really related to a particular development. It just bolsters our system and keeps it in good working operation. So most of all of our projects, I would say 99% of our projects are city replacement type projects and not developer-driven projects. But some that just come to the top, that come to the top that we'll be talking about soon, not ready to ask for any of these things, the things that we're considering is going to be a new water source. I mean, we're going to have that study back from HDR. Matter of fact, it came in last Friday, I think. I haven't made it through it all the way. It's just the first draft. And so we'll be reading that and seeing what that looks like. It's not ready for public consumption yet, but we're just getting through there. But we'll actually have a project or two that comes out of that that'll ask for y'all's guidance on...
For public consumption, the public needs to know, we are looking for new water sources.
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you.
So those tanks. G B R A that came with us a couple of weeks ago for that habitat conservation plan. I don't know if that'll be a CIP project, and that may be more on the operational side, but they're going to be wanting us to contribute at some point, some dollar amount, which I'll ask them. We haven't narrowed that down yet, but you'll be seeing that in future budgets too. Probably not next year, but in future years. Nap Road Lift Station is the next grade. So as you saw, we're coming from Nap Road right now, we're going to Nap Road to get additional wastewater service all the way to the west side of the county, or the west side of the city limits. We need to upgrade Nap Road Lift Station, and there's another piece of line work after that. What we'll probably be doing is bringing it to management, saying, hey, does the city continue to want to grow towards the west? Or do we want to shift and add additional wastewater capacity more towards the north for some developments that are going on in that area? But until that money's available, those are our two areas of interest right now.
But aren't we already working a lot on the Nap Road Lift Station or not? I know the wastewater project from Nap, wastewater collection project connects that all the way. So it's a separate, the lift station is separate from that collection system?
The project we're working on right now gets us up to Nap Road Lift Station. It's the downstream of Nap Road. It's called the Collector. And so after that...
And part of that is the reason we help, we don't help. We service the City of Ingram sewage system too, don't we?
Yes, sir. It all flows through that Lift Station and through this new main, yes, sir. So those are the, that's just a little glimpse into what the CIP.
Does it benefit to Curville to help Ingram with their sewage as it go in the river?
Makes our water clean?
Stuart, just for anybody that's watching or listening to, you said we're looking at a new water source. That is just looking toward the future because there's nothing wrong with our water sources we have right now, correct?
It's just more volume, yes, sir.
Correct.
If possible. And we're running precious low on additional new volume out there for the drought. There's not a whole lot of future or water sources that are in our reach with our budget and our...
Good, I think it'd just add to our portfolio.
Correct. So I cover another bank in another town, and they are actually putting a pipeline in from Waco...
Oh, my gosh.
To Lake Jackson. Also for another water source. A lot, so I'm like...
All the miles.
A lot of miles. I'm sitting there going, y'all are doing what?
When you're out of water, they don't make anymore. I mean, it's not like you can go discover it somewhere else. If there's no water...
Could you give me the bumper sticker, prescription of the Elm Creek Discharge Pipeline?
So that's going to be one of the options that we consider on additional raw water. So one of the options that we're having the engineer evaluate right now is taking our reuse water. We would cap, we would go in...
I understand, I remember. Thank you.
And then real quick on the design and potential renovation. Obviously, this is something we want to bring to y'all's attention. This is mostly for utility billing. So as the public safety facility opens, and this is just for consideration and discussion, just wanted to get some of y'all's thoughts on this. Public safety facility opens, obviously municipal court's going to be going over there. This leaves a building that's, you know, municipal use. One of the many things that we've kind of talked about was utility billing, and Julie and her team can kind of speak to this a little bit more, is it really kind of running out of room? Some of the complaints we get is the parking or lack thereof, some of the handicap accessible stuff. The drive-through is a little bit, you know, challenging and can be complicated. And so those are some of the complaints that we've yielded. You know, one of the things that we did, and I think this is another important thing to talk about real quick, is when we sold the Center Point Road land, which was the old aviation antenna thing, this was almost over a year and a half ago, we decided pretty much to say, we're not using this for maintenance and operations, which was, it tended to happen. Anytime we sold something and we got a fresh, you know, batch of cash, we spent it. Where now we're reserving these things. So under sales of land, certain lease revenues, we are putting those aside for either purchase of, you know, future land or some other used renovations or anything. Better use of the funds within its applicability, if you will. So one of the things that we are considering is moving utility billing over there. So revamping, renovating the municipal court building, move utility billing over there, which the parking's better. We would add a better accessible drive-through, you know, handicap accessibility. That would, one, move about five or six people over into that area with utility billing being the core component of that. And then that would free up some space here at City Hall, which would ease some of the pressure. If you haven't walked through finance, they are really sitting on top of each other. And so, you know, space is very valuable, and we're trying to make the best use of the space that we have available. So it would cost roughly, I think the number was about $300,000, which we, two things we can look at. One, we have the cash set aside in the general fund if we wanted to use that. But being utility billing and under the water, we could tie it into a CIP project in funding within the water fund as well. So we have the cash for both if we wanted to do that. But we wanted to, one, bring that to your attention because it's a CIP project. But two, wanted to get y'all's thoughts on the utility billing and potentially moving over there because that is a significant impact and a big, obviously, move that would take, you know, some time for us to play out and really get y'all's thoughts on if that's something viable.
Makes sense to me. I mean, I visually see a lot of people in it, and if finance could move into that area, that would help. And I think being self-contained in a separate building with parking, that they be not mixing with what goes on here at City Hall would be helpful for them.
Correct. And really, that parking over there would still be able to be used for City Hall use. You know, obviously, we can dive into any contracts that we have available or any restrictions that we have. But ideally, you know, we can take a look, but that should not impact. We should still, we will still be able to use that for City Hall parking or people doing business at City Hall. It'll just limit.
I heard you check the contract very carefully.
Okay, we will dive into that.
There are portions of Pearson Plaza we thought we had used up that we do not.
So we'll take a look at this. But pending some of the fine details and going through, high level, just wanted to get y'all's thoughts and opinions. And so obviously, that is going to be a big change to the public of what they're traditionally used to doing. Of course, like anything, we will make sure that it's a smooth transition and work through all of that.
And you'll have to have it run through.
Oh, absolutely, yeah. It would be a renovation to accommodate again more folks.
Yeah, when the new building opens up, you're going to have a lot of real estate all of a sudden is opened up. Whichever department you're most angry at can go in the old place.
I think that's some revenue coming.
I have a list.
Yeah, I got a couple right now. One may not move. All right, I'm sorry to interrupt.
No, not at all. So, yeah, that's just kind of a customer-facing idea there, to just be more nice to our customers, so. So do a couple more things. Will we go to a five-minute break before we get into the revenues? You can certainly do that.
Certainly, let's take a five-minute break. It's 11:19, so we'll be back about 11:25.
So I had made an 11:30 meeting, but obviously I miscalculated. What was I thinking? 10 to 11, that's what I thought.
If you believe, you're welcome.
I think we're doing good. We're doing great.
Yeah, a five-minute break, everyone, please.
It's the general fund one we need to repair. All right, we're back to break. Who's up?
I'm up. I've got a couple more slides, and I'll hand it over to Trina, and we're going to roll this up. So the next slide is just, when we're looking at CIP, just from, we were talking about being intentional, and you can see those years in between. And what I found when I was looking at this history is the years that we had a debt issuance, so we had an influx of cash, that we wouldn't transfer money over for future years. In other words, we had money on hand to take care of the projects we needed, so we weren't saving for the future. So what we're trying to do is kind of a compilation of the two. I mean, there's no doubt that we cannot cash fund everything. That's not possible. But can we be intentional about creating a balance that allows us to do some of these smaller projects that we need to, or at least be okay in a position to take care of emergency type of things?
And this graph shows, this graph shows proposed transfers, is that correct?
Yes, so...
It shows the balance, it shows the transfer.
Those are the transfers, yes. And this is also reflected in your forecast, in the red box on your... So you can see it moving out in future, so that's growing after we pay off that debt, of course. So, yep. Okay, this is just really quick, and we talked about the facility system fund already. This is really just establishing money to say, we're dedicating this to things that are facility-related. And, you know, nothing's new anymore. So all of our water plant buildings are aging too. And so we need a major HVAC replacement, if we need a roof replacement, if we need to replace a building, then that's really what this would be designed for so that hopefully we're not having to do any kind of debt issuance for larger maintenance-type things to keep our buildings functioning the way they should. And so we have a proposed transfer to that of $125,000. In '24, we established that fund using interest revenue, if you remember. So no money has come to this fund directly from operations. It came from investment.
And real quick, this is the, probably, this is the newest fund out of the replacement-type R and M funds. If y'all recall, and I can't remember if it was before May or after May of last year, we had the facilities assessment come in, and this is ultimately what is helping us identify that. So we are looking internally at, you know, facilities-type managers to make sure that we're constantly looking at all of the different facilities so we don't let certain things get away from us where then we have to fund HVACs, you know, in certain ways. So we're constantly looking at that, taking the facilities assessment, and putting funding aside for the future repairs of the facilities themselves.
Looking at you, Kyle, Theodore.
We're actually using a little bit of this money that was set aside in '23, I believe, '24. Sorry, because that's '23, we put it in the CIP for the HVAC systems that you guys just approved here. So it's without dividend operations, we're using some of that stuff. Okay. Really quick on debt, and then I'm going to turn this over. So this is nothing new that you ever seen before, nothing's changed on our debt structure. Trina was kind enough to drop in the focuses of each debt issuance. So if you're not sure what CO16 was, you will know exactly and be able to match those out. And then basically, you can see those by color as they're indicated at the bottom, which each series is and what the payment amount is for each of those debt issuances each year, and then how that levels off as we start to pay off some of this debt. And so we're working on a capacity analysis right now. We try to do that at least once a year, just to kind of see where we are. It's where we always bring that back. This is where we are right now, and then we work with Stuart and David and Kyle and their teams to say what's out there on the master plan that is critical and we can make changes to that. So we're working on a longer-range CIP that's going to kind of overlap with our longer-range debt service. Anybody have any questions on anything expense-related? We wanted to address all the expenses because really in budget, you can start backwards. So we wanted to address all of that first, just so you can kind of see what we're talking about using the revenues for.
And the one thing I will add before we dive into the next one is, in the water fund, the expenses are relatively stable. They're the one things that are not going to change. They're mostly fixed. It's the revenues that fluctuate based off of volume and other factors that Trina will go into.
Okay, we're going to turn it over to Trina. Are we ready? This thing has a little bit of a delay. Have you ever noticed that in a council meeting, we skip something? We're pushing it and it will...
We're focused on other things.
We feel awesome, but we get there.
I see when the button's pushed. Are we there?
There we are.
Okay, we're there.
Okay, so how are we going to pay for all of these expenditures? CIP transfers, asset replacement transfers, all the sustainability pieces we've been talking about. As you know, the water system is 97% consumption base is the revenues that they're bringing up to the dollars. So we're proposing fiscal year '26 budget with $17,566,000 in revenue. I'm sorry, I cannot find my words here. And that was a 4.4% increase over '25, so $740,000. Where is that going to come from? So we have water cells, sewer cells, we have waste disposal, which are the septic haulers that drop off out there at the wastewater treatment plant, reuse reclaimed water. And then we have small taps, meters, all those additional little revenues do help support the system overall. Customer service fees mainly in the utility billing department. And then, as always, we're always investing idle cash, so we have interest money and miscellaneous. And as Julie said, that the feds are kind of holding steady. So right now, the money is coming in, but we're just not sure about the future. So that's kind of, we drew that back a little bit. But just a comparison here, fiscal year '25 versus '26, water revenues made up $7.8 million, which is 46% of the overall water fund revenues. And then the sewer made up $7.7 million, which was another 46%. Here in '26, it changes a little bit. Water's going up to $8 million, still 46% of the overall revenues, and the sewer is 7.9, 45%.
Y'all are collecting fees for credit card transactions, correct?
Yeah, so that, we implemented that in 2024. So basically, it should just be a pass-through. Basically, what we're collecting is used to pay the actual credit card fees to the market to process those transactions.
Okay, so is that reflected in customer service fees or in miscellaneous?
It's in services.
Yes.
Trina, can I ask a question on this, please?
Yes, sir.
2025 sewer, we're at $7.7 million for 46%. '26, we're going up to 7.9, and we're going down a percent?
Yeah, reuse going up, but it's capturing the entire fund's revenue as the overall source. So, yeah, with the additional revenues included in that, the jump is not as high.
Just to include those small percentage derivatives in the calculation.
Just kind of seemed odd, we went up and went down.
Yeah, and sometimes that's confusing because, you know, this year, when she goes into the reuse, even though it's not perfect and ideal, we have a starting point to work forward, and that's where that 1% is reflected.
Thank you.
All right. So just a little bit of analysis on revenues. So currently, we are lining up better to other comparison cities of what we're trying to do with our base rates and our volume metric tiers. It is always difficult to compare those because every city has a different system, a different strategy. But, you know, still looking at overall debt, and everybody's doing pretty much the same task. They're trying to conquer the same things here. Our system is very diverse, and Stuart has talked about that. Again...
So when you say it lines up better, what do you mean, what's better?
Yeah, we're going to go into that, but we were, our focus last year was increasing those base rates and volume metric rates to what other cities were billing out at. So '25, it looks better. We're back in that arena, but not quite where we want to be yet. So just pointing out that we are going that direction.
So we're more reliant on the base rates than the... You're correct, you're saying that's better.
Yeah, it'll show less of an impact, and you'll be able to see that. And so per council's direction, last year, when we did the big increase on the base, we wanted to take a look at multiple different scenarios. So we looked at the base rate, we looked at what the impact would be on the tier grades. We didn't touch the tier grades, you know, last year if we did, it was minimal. But, yeah, so we took a look at all those different scenarios, and we'll be able to talk through all of those different questions.
But the base rate just went up by inflation compared to the...
Correct.
Or it wasn't like we made some, we just caught up.
So if you looked at the compounded annual growth rate of the base rate last year, then yes, it was 25%, but the compounded annual growth rate was factored in inflation. Now, when she says it lines up, we're basically saying, hey, we're at a great starting point of inflation that we'll be able to see that over the... of inflation, that we'll be able to see that over the course of five years, we'll be able to basically have a positive net change in revenues, if you will, to cover the system. And again, less reliance on it, but more stable across the board versus what was happening before with irrigation rates.
So as you know, our tiered rates right now, they are higher per tier, the more gallons used, maintaining that structure. Our residential base rate does currently include 1,000 gallons in that cost, so we don't start until 1,001 gallons on the tiers. The fiscal year '26 proposed base rate will generate approximately $3.2 million, or 40% of the overall water revenues. And we're hopeful that we can start getting towards maybe the 50% range eventually to cover those basic everyday operating costs of the system. It is more sustainable, it's a, we can, it's just reliable, and we can depend on at least obtaining that base rate. The tiered rates, the volumes are very volatile, dependent on weather conditions and drought conditions, and if it doesn't, if they don't, if the water is not used, we cannot bill for it, and that obviously impacts the revenues. Irrigation, in fiscal year '26, it's all best guess, but approximately, it will make up 34% of the overall revenues. And as Dalton told you earlier, we did a 10% haircut on irrigation consumption. We're reeling back a little bit of what we can depend on, and that affects anything, 15,000 gallons plus. Last year, I had to explain to you, we average about 15,000 to 2,000 per person in the household. So five-person household, 10,000 gallons, you, anything over that, you're probably irrigated, it's probably not domestic use. So we chose those categories and gone with that. Your sewer base charge in fiscal year '26 should make up approximately $2.7 million, or 35% of the overall revenues. Again, gearing towards trying to cover just the standard operating cost. Now, looking at this year, fiscal year '25, where we think we will land, right now, the base rate with that 25% increase brought us up to close to $3 million in base rate charges, and that is making, covering 35%. With '26, we'll be covering close to 40% with base rate increases. I have done analysis on the consumption this year, we are up about 5% on water consumption. However, I have some further charts here to show you, but the consumption was down 15% or plus from '23 going into this year. So it's making up the deficit, but not back to normal before drought condition basis. Sewer base rate currently, right now, in '25, should make up about $2.2 million of the revenues, and that's 30%, and we'll be working on that. Back to the water revenues, let's get that. We, this year is performing quite well, our model is, has been working, we think we anticipate in the year about $100,000 that is in budget, so just depends on what the weather does and what the citizens choose to do.
And real quick, Trina, just to kind of reemphasize for y'all and for, you know, viewers and listeners, while that's $100,000 in surplus, that is also, we already built in CIP, we've already built in all of those, you know, big fixed asset replacements. So we're not doing what we've done before, where pay as you go, and you just, you're not paying. So this surplus is a true surplus versus, you know, with built-in fixed asset sustainability and all of that in place. So I just wanted to reemphasize that, this is not the only surplus that is coming, we've built in those other things in there.
And then sewer revenues, I guess we did a plug somewhere, so we think we've run a little bit short on sewer revenues this year, $33,000. I don't know, by the end of the year, it may make itself up. But residential sewer averaging kind of saves us, it's always, it's pretty consistent. However, the commercial sewer is based on their water consumption, so if that lacks, then that sewer lacks. So we'll see how it pans out. All right, these graphs here are the consumption analysis we did. So the chart over to the left is a three-year look at before we went to our water conservation measures. So the gray line is 2023, '24 is in green, and 2025 is this current year. As you can see, we went into stage two, August of '23, and I think there was a little bit of a lag, because I don't see the true difference in that consumption going down on the gray line. But as soon as we go to 2024, you start dropping because of those water conservation stages, and that stayed well below 2023 the whole year. And then blue is 2025, that we're currently in, and it's trying to make a comeback. We were down 12% from '23 to '24, and moving up through April, up 5% through April, compared to April '24. So we'll just see how it goes. Your graph to the right is the consumption by calendar year, and you can see those changes year over year. Your bottom chart here is just giving you the actual gallons that we have billed out, and if you were curious as to what those numbers were.
The consumption by month chart is total system consumption, not average consumption, correct?
Yes, it's actual billed-out consumption. All right, so moving on to the rates. So we know that fiscal year '25, we've kind of had a significant increase to the base rates, and again, we've been gearing towards trying to get aligned to where we feel like we should be. So fiscal year '26, we're proposing a 5% base charge increase, which equates to $1.21 per count that we have, and then we didn't touch the tier increases until 15,000 gallons plus, and this is, charger looking at is strictly residential customers. So 1%, 3%, and 5% on each of those tiers, which equates to 6 cents, 24 cents, and 52 cents to those customers that fall into that category. Do keep in mind that because you use 25,000 gallons, you don't automatically get billed $6.28 per 1,000 gallons, you grow up to that 25,000 gallons, so you hit each tier up to that, so. We'll have some, we'll show you what a true bill comparison will look like with these rate changes.
So those are the marginal rates.
Say that again?
Those are the marginal rates. In other words, when you get to that level.
Between 15 and 25, you have 1%, and 25 and 50, you have 3%.
Correct, yeah, it's bracketed.
That's right. And then the blue chart on the bottom are the proposed sewer rates, so 7% base charge increase, and then a 7% tier increase, and those equate to $1.59 on the base charge, and 44 cents per 1,000 gallons on the tier charge.
So you have the target to go from 40% up to 50%, you said?
Eventually, yes, sir.
So this is a step in that direction.
Correct. And so when you look at this kind of red line chart, if you will, what we're, the goal of it is, is say, you know, 5% this year, or the small impact of the base rate, but always factoring in an inflationary factor on the base rate versus the tiered rates, because they were so volatile. But the inflationary factor on the base rates, and then over time, we'd be able to fall off, and so that base rate would get more in line with actual inflation, you know, and still cover the cost of fixed asset CIP and everything else. So this is just a step, and then it'll slowly scale down, that you'll be able to see on this chart. And real quick, just kind of, where that comes in is the expenses don't really change, right? So the revenues, where the impact comes in, based off the inflationary factors, if you lower that, it comes out of CIP, it comes out of fixed asset, it comes out of sustainability. And so over a five-year period, that's reflected in here to show what that looks like.
The assumptions on the expense side are between 2% to 4% between on the line item, so they're pretty darn conservative. So we're hopeful with stability of inflation, that that's going to hold true.
Yeah, and we'll make sure we have a matrix too, to kind of show, you know, a very simple kind of five-year forecast of what that would look like, very simplistically, looking at 5%, you know, this year, and then what that would look like on the decrease. But, you know, you can see the revenues kind of go down, but we're able to increase funds into our savings account, our fund balance.
So with these proposed rates, we wanted to show you the impact to the average customer. So this fiscal year '25, our sewer average change was from 5,100 gallons a month up to 5,200 gallons a month. And I really can't remember why that went up or not, could be a little bit of growth, a little bit of both, I mean, everything. But anyways, this chart shows you what the bill would equate to for the changes in the water and the sewer for each type of customer. So if you have the average citizen that uses only 1,000 gallons a month, remember, they get that 1,000 gallons free in the base charge, their total bill will be $49.69 a month, and that's a $2.80 change, and annually for 12 months, that would be about $34. Now, if you look at that average customer using $5,200 a month, their monthly change would be $5.91, and about $71 a year that they would see. Of course, we always keep the citizen in mind, that's our top priority, making sure we're able to provide services to them, and quality standards, and just really overall what it's going to do, how it's going to impact the families. All right, so with our proposed rates, we wanted to show where we would land at, where we would be at as far as our base rate comparisons on the water and sewer side, as well as what a total bill would look like compared to the rest of the region. These are benchmarks of other cities, and we use their current fiscal year '25 rates compared to what we're proposing for '26 to see where we line up on that. So that's FEMA. So as you can see, Curville is the light blue line, will be at $25.41 on the water base rate, and that's still somewhat below the median, the middle there. And we took the numbers that for a standard 5/8 inch or 3/4 inch meter, once you get into the. As I said, some cities just bill differently, depends on, they're very advanced, and they know what every property's size meter is in their billing system. I mean, we do too, but we don't bill differently on, you have a 3/4 inch, you have a 1-inch, your charge is this, your charge is that. We kind of have a standard base rate period for a domestic meter, and depending on the usage, the use of it, like if a fire hydrant, base rate will be a little bit different than a residential, it's a lot higher volume compared to what a domestic household would use. So there's just different strategies that every city uses, but we took the baseline of 5/8 inch or 3/4 inch to make our comparisons.
Can I ask a question? San Antonio is $9.
Yeah, very low.
So is it because they have.
The density.
Okay, yeah.
When you start looking at the density per acre, the revenue per acre, it's able to go down. And so Stuart, please correct, you know, correct me if I'm wrong, you know, when we talked about like having a very complex system, you know, this is where I think to the point of Councilmember McKenna's point of efficiency, it kind of shows our efficiency in here by we have run a very complex system, you know, very similar, or, you know, up there with San Antonio, or some of the larger systems on a smaller scale, but are still able to maintain, you know, a, ultimately a low marginal cost, if you will, to be able to cover the cost, still provide a great service, and try to keep the bills as low as possible, while protecting the sustainability.
Cities of San Antonio and places of that size, and that growth level also have impact fees.
Yes.
So it's kind of a, helps offset some of their ring calculations.
Okay, thank you.
They don't have to do a drain.
They, the, well, Stuart mentioned Blanco came to visit and take a tour of the facilities, and we mentioned that we had 27 lift stations, they said they had two? Yeah, they have two. So the topography in all of the cities is a little less challenging than ours.
A lot of cities trying to get rid of their lift stations, we have no choice.
But our neighbor, 1160.
That's what I was looking at, too.
At where?
Fredericksburg.
You don't even know if they treat their water.
I don't know. Wander around the water, no.
They're only groundwater?
Bring them a bottle of water.
That's just their mess rate, there's other.
Correct.
So I think we'd be more reliant on irrigation or whatever.
Well, that's why it's really hard to compare, when you can put it side by side.
It's just the effect of the days of old.
Fredericksburg goes to like, compared to Curville as well.
All right, next is just the base charge for the sewer, Curville, where they land, right there in the middle, about, compared to everyone else also. And then this last one is the overall bill for that average customer using 5,200 gallons. Curville is the fourth from the bottom, which is really the top on your chart. Looks at an overall bill for $92.74 per year, or per month, I'm sorry, for 5,200 gallons of water consumed.
And just remember, because when I look at this, I have to remind myself as well, this is comparing our proposed to their current.
That's right.
So this does not factor in the unknown of what they are potentially, or could raise their rates to.
One of them won't rate your share.
This is Councilmember McKenna's favorite part.
All right, so that is the water and sewer base rate. And we brought to you in workshop last week, the reclaimed water, we did an overall analysis on our reclaimed system. And as you recall, as you can remember, we said that we pretty much have hard costs that go out the door every year for reclaim, the retention pond is about $1.8 million, and that's for debt service and just the annual operating costs for the pond. We are responsible for getting the water down those distribution lines to each of the entities that we have contracts with and that use the reclaimed system. So right now, we generate approximately $178,000 annually in reclaimed water sales. Our reclaimed water rate is 75 cents per 1,000 gallons, and as you can see, that $178,000 is not supporting itself in a sustainable manner. So we wanted to see what we could do, and if you remember, all those contracts, they had a seven-year clause of actual rates we had to chart out for the last seven years, those have not fired, so we can start moving in a direction that's going to support the system. So we showed you two, two ways to go about this. We showed you what flat rates would look like, as well as what tiered rates would look like on the reclaimed rate structure. And we're proposing to go with the tiered rate structure. We are choosing that because it does promote conservation, as we do on every other category of our water cells. Our base charge would be consistent with trying to at least go geared towards helping cover some of the operating costs. It's super low, it's based on the commercial rates, that was $20.65, we were proposing $171 per month account base charge on the reclaimed customers. This would generate approximately $460,000 in fiscal year '26 for us. And we do, we did plan already to kind of put into play the plans for the next couple of years, or what those rates need to look like too, so that we can keep combining all pieces of where our goals are. I just put a benchmarking chart there again for you, to see where the rest of the industry was, and where we will be landing for fiscal year '26, if you so adopt those rates. And the yellow chart to the right is the comparison to the regular irrigation customers using potable water. Those are higher rates, obviously because it's potable water, and in fiscal year '26, I think they're going to jump all the way up to possibly $10 per 1,000 gallons on the highest tier. So reclaimed customers are getting a major discount, but we want to encourage them to use that water, not the potable water.
So the benchmarking, you said, all these cities, what do you say about the, they have reclaimed water, or they don't have reclaimed?
They have a reclaimed water system, and these are their base charges and tiered rates. Some are flats, and some use tiered rates. And that's not the whole list, that's just a snip. But overall summary level, the average was about $248 a month for the base charge, and then per 1,000 gallons, about $2.67.
If I'm doing the math correct, the proposed rates on reclaimed water would increase our revenues by $282,000.
So the base part of that overall fund increase really relieves pressure on.
So we charge more, the more gallons they take. And what's the logic of that?
Water conservation. So that's how the rest of our structured rates are, the higher, the more gallons you use, the higher it is going to cost per 1,000 gallons. Now, that first tier to the second tier is about a 25% jump, and then the second tier to the third tier is only a 15% jump. So that's a fine balance of encouraging them to use the water, but not kind of allowing them to use the water, you know?
So you said the current rate generates $178,000?
Yes.
The new rates would generate $200,000. The new rates would generate 200 and...
400.
400.
24 more.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't have the charts. That's what I want to know, that's better. I was thinking it was 200. Okay.
Any other questions? Want to move on?
Okay, we always put this in the packet, just so you know that we always have our customers in mind, and we have, we work with some programs outside of the city, some entities that can help with assistance on paying utility bills. That is Christian Assistance Ministries, St. Vincent de Paul, Salvation Army. We have a lot of, we have good relationships with those. We also have a neighborhood assistance program in which other citizens of the community can donate to a pot. And we actually have a contract that we, at the end of the year, hand that money over to CAM. So they are the administrators of those funds. We hand it over to them, and they decide who they can help and support. We work closely with Aqua Texas, we do have some Curville South accounts that mainly sewer that we, it's really just our connecting source to them. We don't always reel everybody in, people move in, and it's a whole separate entity from their utilities, and they kind of forget about us sometimes. So that's a helpful resource for us to make sure we have everybody online and have their accounts set up how they're supposed to. We do have penalty exemptions for customers who only get paid once a month, you know, teachers or, you know, just social security customers. They only have a, they're on a fixed income, and they only can pay at a certain time. So if their due date comes and goes before they get paid, they would incur a penalty, but if they register with us and let us know, we can exempt them from penalties. Really? Just working the best way we can to help support the community.
So can I ask a question? The $2,000, is that close to really making a difference? Do you seem like a lot of money?
Well, those are donations that come in from people who are already here, and we advertise that in a press release from time to time. I'd have to guess, it's been a long time since I looked at it, but Christian Assistance Ministry gives us eight plus, probably 1,000 a year if I was guessing, in assistance. So they have money from other sources. We're just a component, so, yeah. They do, we get a lot of vouchers from them, either for a piece of someone's utility bill or all of it, just depends on the customer. But they definitely contribute more than we give to them.
I know a lot of people, I've met a few people who have benefited from it. Sometimes they get some and sometimes they don't, because the supply that they might have.
Yeah, and there's restrictions on how often you can get it, and so, you know, you have St. Vincent and CAM that work closely together to work those things out.
That's a real component, that might help better.
So let's hear about this, this campaign to get paid once a month, they can apply. Why would they have, what's their, why is that, why is there a program like that?
Why is there a program like that?
Because their bill gets once a month, right?
Yeah, but let's say you get your bill on the first and it's due on the fourth, but you don't get your social security check till the 10th or the 5th, and so you would have a 10% penalty. So teachers get paid on the 25th, let's say their bill comes on the, you know, 20, 20th or something, and you'd be late before you got paid.
How many people are on that program? Do you know of a couple of that?
I'd have to look and run a report, but I mean, I wouldn't say it's hundreds, but it's a good amount. We have a lot of people who get social security. That is the primary.
The billing cycles though drive the due date.
Yes, because remember, we have three billing cycles, that's what drives the due date, and so...
If you're in billing cycle X, your due date is this, and if you're on that fixed income with that fixed date, you'll constantly pay.
You can't change their billing cycle.
We can't, because they're geographical. And so when our reads come in, they come in geographically.
Makes a lot of sense.
Yeah. Yeah, that's what it is. They're geographical by cycle, so I would say we have more...
Do you want your bill to be different than your neighbor's?
Well, yes.
It has to be the same.
There's carriers.
It has to do with efficiency. So we, we get a read meters and things.
So we got a whole other program, so we can be efficient somewhere else.
That was not difficult, and I would say that most of those people on that program are social security only income, more than, more than others. They're just the super tight fixed incomes.
So we could change the billing cycle.
No.
Well, so... I mean, the software won't allow it, or what won't allow it?
Well, the software, you complicate the software infinitely, and then every time you've got to fix it during a maintenance cycle, it'll deep back.
It's a pretty integrated software.
No, it's not.
No, it's state of the art, it's just, it has a limitation. And so, you know, we've gone from meter readers having to go out and physically look at somebody's meter to them having the drive-by capability in the trucks. And then the future of that is you have the towers in town that go out and they read the meters every 10 seconds or so.
That's happening now. About 90% of our customers are coming in, so they come straight into the computer. You would basically, if you had to go into a reread, you might go to Curville South area, and then maybe you go to Comanche, and then maybe you go to, so geographically is definitely the most efficient way to do it. Managing those little one-off type things is not difficult compared to...
You're reading, but you're not reading it anymore by going out.
Some of them we are, and we still reread.
Well, the 9%.
Yeah, we have reread situations, maintenance, those kind of things. And if you don't really want to do maintenance in, over in this area when bills are coming in that day, because then you mess with the read, there's a lot of different factors. It's pretty complex, actually, the way the reads come in, and when you do maintenance has a lot to do with that too, if you're going to do meter change out, stuff like that.
All right, other questions? Want to go to the garage fund?
Is there anything else on water, any direction on water?
Yeah, me too.
Okay, so we brought garage in with water because, as you know, garage is, it's an internal service fund, it doesn't really have a revenue stream. They are working on city-owned vehicles and equipment, and it has to be fed some type of way. So what we do is split, its revenue stream is split from the general fund and the water fund, and we pretty much base it on the assets that they fix on, how much is owned by each fund. So general fund obviously has more equipment and assets that they would work on, so water takes the rest of it. And our transfer this year for them is...
So you have 92.
Oh, 92,000, I already spelled that. Okay, so 92,000, so, but their overall operational costs are the 324,000 for personnel, and that, the personnel this year was a 3% increase, pretty much. Supplies and materials, $18,000 need, and maintenance and repairs, $16,000. And then services, again, is for utilities and networking and phones and things that they need there at the, to overhead, overhead of the garage. Now, last year, just like any other fund, we've always tried to build circles, or they need a starting balance. You don't want to just send what, exactly what they need, and they have nothing to start from next year. So I think we plugged in maybe a little less than 10,000 for excess transfer in, so that they can have a starting place next year. Yeah, we have depreciation expense and all that. They pretty much have to cover all of the expenses and liabilities that happen for their fund on their own, and some of that excess will help cover those costs.
One thing I want to add on the garage fund, it's not mentioned here, we don't necessarily have a plan for it now, but want to put the bug in y'all's ear. This is one of those assets on the CIP slash general facilities fund that is going to need a massive overhaul. They've not necessarily outgrown it, it's just an old, old, old building, but more importantly, especially with weather, there's vehicles that they cannot operate in undercover, which leaves those vehicles out in the elements. So Stuart and his team have done a great job over the past couple of years to put in metal carports, if you will, to cover a lot of the big fixed assets that are out there and protect them. But this is the one area that they cannot get ambulances, you know, effectively in, fire trucks, you know, obviously. We don't want to need a building and put a whole fire truck in, but this is going to be one that we're going to really have to start coming up with a plan over the next couple of years on what the future of this looks like, so.
Thank you. Just so I understand, I'm sorry. Garage fund. The water fund doesn't fund all of their budget, just a portion.
Just a portion.
So they own about 20% of the assets, so they fund about 20% of the budget.
Thank you.
All right, so, so next steps, we're going to continue progress on negotiation of the cost of the group health insurance, and Kim's going to do a great job.
We have a lot, though. Kim has a whole bunch of bids that she's got open right now. Fingers crossed.
Yes.
Yes. That's a big expense.
Was that last year that we did, we cross again?
Insurance does seem to be...
Kim is a shark in that world, so.
Yes, but we know that, you know, the time may come where we have to do something, and we've been holding steady pretty, pretty good. We had an 11% increase last year, or, I'm sorry, in '24. All the rest are single digits.
And we do, and we do look at that, so there are ways that we can, between Kim and I, both on the insurance side, we have a lot of experience on the benefits, there are some things that we can do to start scaling in, and so we are constantly evaluating what those look like, and we'll see what it brings, and then if we need to scale in, we will let you know.
All right, we should be getting another property preliminary roll the next week or so, but the final one shouldn't come in until possibly July 29th, and we'll be hitting it hard on, one number we change will affect another, so just that balancing act. Definitely monitoring sales tax, it has been just kind of flat. There's no true growth, I mean, but the growth was in '23 up to, till now, but we're kind of leveling, so it's not a lot to play with. We will be going over budget with the senior executive team, see if there's anything missed, anything we need to fit in, adjustments we need to make. And we do have the next budget workshop for general fund and other funds on July 27th at 10:00 AM here. I'm sorry, July 17th. And then we'll be working on our budget book.
On the, real quick, Trina, on the July 17th one, we have it at 10:00 AM. I may be reaching out to y'all and maybe pulling some times, we're probably going to need a little bit more time for that one. Whatever y'all recommend, if we want to start earlier or run later, let us know. If we even need to move it to the evening, we can do that, but you guys...
Whatever you want to do, you have a job.
You have a real job.
Start earlier? I like earlier, but...
Say Saturday. Because I'll be in New Orleans that weekend.
Oh, no, you got to have fun with us. So 9:00 AM?
I think that's good, because it gives us a hard deadline for lunch.
Okay.
We get hungry, we have to go.
Awesome, so...
Speaking of which, I'm hungry now.
So 9:00 AM for the general fund.
And I do have some questions. Rather than wait till that day to interject an opinion or an ask or anything, I might think about just deciding how to do it, when to do it, if to do it, you know?
We could set up some time, you and I...
I want to take that time up here.
Yeah, we, you know, because, you know, we look at this stuff pretty much up until the morning, just to make sure everything is, you know, hashed out tweak, but yes, you and I can get together and we can kind of talk through, or I say you, any council member that may have an ask or something that they want to kind of put in there, I know some I've already talked to y'all about, but if there's anything that y'all have, please let us know, and then we can put some discussion points on the general fund.
Okay. So it's muted off the beginning. So Jacob is doing a great job, documenting our new digital budget book, as you know, that was year one, and having year two was approved as part of our plans. And so we're excited about that, because we're hoping there will be fewer last-minute changes to every graph in the book that needs to be changed. So far, it looks really good, and it's giving you more years of data, and so you can kind of filter and sort, and we'll bring that to you after it's proposed and kind of show you how to use it. Right now, we don't have time to do that, but it's really looking good, sort of excited about that. The beauty of it too is it has a built-in GFOA checklist, and so as you complete things, you can work off your things that are required by GFOA as you vote, so that's been nice too. Of course, we'll present the budget to you on the 12th, and then we'll have a hearing in first and second reading in September, and then complete the budget book after that's filed. Yes, I didn't mention the August 5th workshop. I think that was pretty effective last year, to just bring you back in last-minute changes. We had a really solid number of property tax and those kind of things, meaning you know the budget's been filed, it doesn't mean we can't make modifications.
Real quick, Julie, in the essence of efficiency, one of the things that is not very efficient is, the reason why we went with the digital GFOA book, under normal circumstances, when you get the certified roll and then you have to submit the preliminary budget, normally, you just would submit a line item preliminary budget and you're good to go. But based off of our charter, we have to submit it to GFOA standards, meaning we have to do the entire budget book that normally the teams would do 45 days kind of after the fact and get ready for the full budget. We have to have that 45 days early on the preliminary budget, or the, sorry, the proposed budget's in there. So it's not efficient, and it forces the team to kind of work overtime. However, the efficiency that we're trying to put in, or putting in, is the digital budget book, which templates everything out and makes it a lot easier to submit to that standard. So that's why we do that.
And most people built that, it'll just be one year, the next year, the next year, because we've taken a couple of...
We attempted to have the charter changed to help.
I know. Yeah, and I think that had I known that was that contentious, I just didn't think it was, if you asked, I would have done a better job of talking about the why, because it was...
I agree.
We'll address that next time.
What else do we need today?
I think that's all we need today. Any direction that we have from you, any questions that you might have, if you have it now or later, please let them know, no question. We certainly don't give events to any questions, I hope everyone knows that, it helps us. Because if I don't know what you're thinking or what you're not sure of, then I don't want to answer that.
I think the big question I have for you, Mayor, and Council, is are we on track or do we need to pivot a little bit?
We're on track. What's our theme?
We're still working the theme out. We're still working the theme out.
It's going to be beyond tomorrow.
It's going to be beyond tomorrow. Yeah, we're still working on that.
We have a lot of the basket full of suggestions, we just haven't...
Brenda, do you have anything?
Nope.
Ken?
No.
Thank you all very much.
That says, for the public, what I've learned today is we're focused on sustainability, which means allocating resources with the future in mind, not just current needs. There are no increases to tiered rates for most water customers. There will be increase to reuse water rates, and there will be increases to irrigation rates. I think those are the takeaway that most of the public would have an interest in. I think that looking towards sustainability is not only prudent, but will help prevent surprises in the future. If there's nothing else, we can adjourn. 12:14.